The Library Board of Trustees for Wednesday, September the fourteenth. We'll now move to item two on the agenda, the Pledge of Allegiance. Ed, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ed. We'll now proceed to item three, the adoption of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda of Wednesday, September the fourteenth as presented.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Juanita, second by Ed, to adopt the agenda of September the fourteenth as presented. Discussion? Objections? Motion carried. Call to the public, any slips?
None at this time, Chairman.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item five, discussion items. Sonoyta Library building update, Juan Valderas. Juan, could you please approach? Just press the button right there.
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just a brief update, last time I was here, there was a couple of questions that the board had, and one of them revolved around mold in the building. So we went ahead and did an inspection of the entire building, and everything came back in acceptable levels and no mediation is required. So I'll leave these with Juanita here in a second, so you guys could kind of distribute those. But I think, you know, last time I was here, that was one of the main concerns that I kind of heard about. And also where that possible mold may have come from, or not that they were there, but the water that had been pulling was due to a condensation line from the AC. The line has been repaired, but we are also now looking into replacing the entire system, the entire cooling and heating system. So right now, we're in the process of doing that and figuring out. Right now, the heating part of it is propane, so we're trying to see whether we keep propane out there or we turn it all into electrical. So we're in the process of that. I forgot my notes, but from what I recall, the other question was the availability of access to the building. One of the board members had brought up what the hours would be. And I think I talked to Jennifer and some of the other folks back at the county, and they kind of indicated that I think it was going to, kind of like in Tubac, how we're hoping that it's an organization that runs it. So she gave me a couple of names, the fairgrounds and a few others that will be reaching out to see if there's some organization that's willing to kind of man it per se, you know, open the doors and people could access the building and its resources for longer periods of time, or if it's some sort of event that's after hours, that they could schedule it with them and, you know, they kind of open the building and access the building for them. As to the construction part of it, you know, one of the things that we were looking at was whether there was mold and what we needed to do with that, but there isn't. So, you know, that's not going to affect, you know, whether we have to tear down walls we weren't originally thinking about or, you know, replacing stuff. So we're still working with our architect, getting that scope of work together, figuring out, you know, what everything, it entails, you know, the engineering part, the electrical. So we're a little behind on that, trying to get the scope of work out so we could put it out to bid, because I think the dollar amount that it's going to require to remodel that building is not something that we're going to be able to just hire someone without, you know, putting an RFP out there for companies to bid on. So I will keep you posted on that, but hopefully within the next month or so, we have that scope of work put together, because it has to go through legal. And then we'll start advertising, so construction companies could start bidding on that, on that, on that project. That's kind of all I have. I'm sure if you guys have any questions.
Okay, Juan, thank you for that update. Marva, do you have any questions for Juan?
Just a thank you for the report.
Ed, do you have any comments or questions for Juan?
No problem, no question.
Veronica?
Thank you very much. I'm kind of curious. I know it's difficult, and you haven't put your RFPs out, but do we have target dates as to when we would like to see some of this more complete? Because it's, I know it's an ongoing project.
Right. Unfortunately, I don't. Part of that, we depend on outside help for some of it, the architects, then we have to go to our legal team. That kind of takes a little bit. I know they're short-staffed and they're kind of prioritizing, you know, so our attorneys, the county attorneys, and they also deal with like criminal complaints and things like that. So, you know, depending on where we fall in the priority of things that need to be addressed. But it's something that I know that, you know, we have board support and management support, so we'll try to move it along as quickly as possible. But I don't have, I will try to, once we put the RFP, I think we'll have a better idea, yeah.
Thank you very much for updating us. I wonder about the electricity. You were talking about maybe not going with propane and going with all electric. Is there any possibility of researching the solar panels for the electric? I don't know if there's, you know, grants and all kinds of money right now for the solar, and that's something I think would be worthwhile looking into if possible. And the groups to manage, was the Rotary one of those groups?
Possibly, possibly. They gave me like three or four. Sorry, I forgot my notebook where I wrote them down, but I remember clearly one of them was the fairgrounds, and there was a few other on that list, but the Rotary might be one of them.
Do they have to be a nonprofit, or doesn't matter?
I will check on that, whether they need to be.
Because the fairgrounds is not. The fairgrounds is not a nonprofit, yeah. But I'm just curious, maybe they...
The county manager gave me that, to reach out to Lacy over at the fairgrounds. So I'm guessing that's okay?
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Juan submitted two reports to us that he just alluded to in his presentation. I've given direction to Juanita to email those two copies of the reports to you. They'll be emailed to you this afternoon, so if you want to peruse it, you'll have time to do that this afternoon. And Juan, you'll be back next month?
If you'd like me to. Hopefully, I have more information.
Would you please, we'll put you down there. We'll have you first on the agenda, and at that time, the board members can go over those reports. And if they write down any questions, you'll be here to answer those questions at that time.
Okay. What day?
Then our next meeting in October is... Is it the 12th?
It's on the 12th.
The 12th, at 10:30. October the 12th at 10:30. We'll put you first on the agenda, Juan, okay?
Yeah, I'll pan. I think I'm here in town, but I know in October, there's a couple of days traveling for work.
If something comes up, just tell Juanita, and we'll move from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Juan.
We'll move on to item two on the agenda, security issues. Lieutenant Bermeulis.
Going to steal this. I don't have to go around. This is my first meeting, so my name is Lieutenant Jose Bermeulis. I'm filling in for Lieutenant Gallego today. He's off on a conference. I'm not sure, is this every month?
We try to do it every month, yeah.
How, when was the last meeting?
But the last, Lieutenant Gallego showed up two months ago.
Two months ago, okay. So in the, we've had a couple of incidents at the library. The, in June, there was that burglary. I'm not sure if Lieutenant Gallego advised you of that. We do have a suspect in mind. We have video. It's just we're waiting on any forensic evidence to make sure that we can actually have enough to arrest him and place him there at the scene. Other than that, there's been just a couple suspicious activities, suspicious people hanging around the park, next to the library, behind the library. The lights that went up, that our electrician put up, have been really good as far as security issues. It lights up everything really well, so even if you're driving by at night, you could see pretty much everything if somebody's hanging around, hanging, hanging out at the park behind the library as well. You just have to take a quick drive, and everything's lit up really well, so officers can actually see into the library, into the park. So that helped us out a lot, and then it also deterred a lot of people from hanging out there, because everything is really lit up, so that really helped, helped a lot. But there's still people hanging out, there's still people just congregating the library, especially at the park. But those lights did help. I know the burglary we had, there was video. So that helped as well. But so far, it's just those suspicious people that like to hang out. But like I said, the lights really helped out. Officers are always conducting security checks there. We try to call them out, and it's listed here in the reports that we get. But yeah, for now, those are pretty much the main incidents that have occurred. I have it since June, so June up to yesterday's date, but...
Do you want to share with him the concern you had about the bathroom?
Yesterday, we had an incident. We did call PD, and an officer did go over, because there was a gentleman that was showering in the men's bathroom. We did tell him to leave, and he did start trying to shower in the water fountain inside the, inside the library. And when police was called, when we called police, he did leave, and he was congregating at the park. And as soon as they saw the police arrive, they just, they jumped the fence, jumped the walls, so the police wasn't able to catch them, but it was, I'm just happy that police did go and they did disperse. So we're just trying not to, we did close the bathrooms, just so that they do not shower in the bathrooms. I don't know if that's going to be, what would be the question, if it's an issue locking the doors, locking the bathroom if they're showering?
The problem that we have is that we have to close the bathrooms, Lieutenant. It limits the access to the patrons who actually need to use the bathroom. That's the problem that we have.
Yeah, and that is probably going to be more of an issue for the library staff. I mean, it is kind of obvious if somebody is there just to shower or, you know, not use the library services. But if you, I would recommend if you do see somebody that comes in for the library staff, that more than likely, they're not there to use library services. You could always call the police department, or you could ask them, hey, you know, you have to be using our services in order to use a bathroom, use a facilities, hang out. If not, then, you know, we're, if you don't leave, we're going to call the police department so they could make you leave. And obviously, if, if they do that more than once, you can always tell them, we don't want you here in our facility, you know, trespass them, let them know that. The first incident, showering in the bathroom, that, you know, they're trespassed, that they're not, they're not allowed to be there. Once you give them that warning, police can actually go in there and issue them citation, arrest them for trespassing. Especially if they're not there to use services. If they're there to shower in the bathroom, you could always warn them first, hey, you will be trespassed if you're not here for our library services, or if you're here to use a bathroom for, you know, not illegal means, but showering, doing other, you know, suspicious stuff inside. You could, you could ask them to leave, tell them they're not wanted. And once you do that, we could actually go further in with what we do, charge them criminally or arrest them.
That gives, that gives us a solution for her.
Yeah, and I will relay that to staff. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Lieutenant Bermeulis, I think that concludes your report. Thank you for your presentation. We appreciate it. The issue and concerns that you surface and cover for us are extremely important to us, and we have an obligation to keep our patrons safe while they are attending there. And we don't want somebody to go in to use the bathrooms and have a little child in there or something, and then this guy has a knife or anything like that, and what turned into a simple little violation now becomes a great criminal disaster for us, and that'll be a nightmare of public relations for us.
Yes, and if there is a concern where you don't want to confront this person, you could always call the police department, and, you know, we'll do it for you. You know, if safety concerns, if the person just doesn't feel right, or is suspicious enough where staff don't want to get involved, give us a call. We'll gladly go over there and do it for you, and warn them, or tell them to, that they're not wanted back at the library because, because of this, this, and this. And the more documentation we get, you know, it's better for us that we could actually say, hey, he was warned, or this person was warned the first time, he was told not to come back, and now he's continuing. So something that we could write in a document and a report, that it's escalated, is better for us, and that way, there is no, you know, PR problems with that, because we took the first step, we warned them. They continued doing it. It escalated the problem, and now, obviously, we have to take more action.
Well, I think that you offer a very viable solution. The only thing we're concerned about is the staff's legal right to ask somebody to open their backpack, or their sandwich bag, or whatever, because we don't know what's in the backpack, and we don't know what's in the sandwich bag. And the problem is, we don't want to find out the hard way what's in there. So I agree with you. I think the staff, through the library director, should, when they see that, just call you, and you take, come over and handle the situation.
And there, you can always post signs where people with the backpack must check it in, or, you know, leave it in the front, or, you know, something where it's obvious that they must follow this to come in.
Do you have a sign that says, "No weapons allowed"? Okay, well then, if somebody comes, well, the only problem is with the backpack, a lot of people walk in with backpacks.
Yeah, especially students.
Yeah, especially the students, because that's where they carry all of their social media stuff. Okay, well, at least you've given some suggestions for our library director to work on that. And then when you're back next month, we can go ahead and look at that and see what else we have available.
Yes, and I'll definitely see what concerns or what we could do about that backpack situation, but...
That would be very helpful.
I know at the school, they actually designate like a backpack area where, in middle school, at the Wade Carpenter, they, there's a little backpack area where they could, the students could leave their backpacks, and they're not allowed to go into the cafeteria with them or anything. It's, that could be an option as well, you know, have a designated backpack area where if people need notebooks, they could just take the notebooks, but leave the backpack.
Yeah, I see that. There's a little bit of difference between the middle school and a public library, because adults will use the backpack issue to say, I had a computer in here, it's no longer in here, and you guys took it. And we don't want to get into that. With the students, it's a different element there than people who want to come in and look for advantages and loopholes into the policy itself. But we look forward to seeing you back here next month, and you got the date of our next meeting. And Juanita will go ahead and contact you to give you a reminder.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your presentation, and if you have other law enforcement duties to do, feel free to leave. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Let's move on to item, agenda, item number three, the Centennial Celebration. I need a little, I need a little help here from the board, and so I hope all of you will participate with feedback here. Mr. Vandabel has indicated to me that he no longer wants to serve as chairman of the committee. And Nan was upset with some of the things of the committee and resigned from the committee and from the board. So we need to look at this. Do we, does somebody on the board want to handle the responsibilities as chairman of the committee? Do we want our board to become the committee itself, which, that is an option, that we'll just take over it? Or the third option is, we leave it up to the library director to go ahead and format all the recommendations and come back with a recommendation for the board's approval. Marva, we'll start with you.
I think your second suggestion, that the board just become the Centennial Committee under Juanita's leadership, because we need to pass everything by her anyway.
I agree. I agree.
So...
I think what I, we, Juanita and I had a lengthy discussion on this, and she will come up with narratives for us to review prior to the meeting, and then we can all work as a board on this together. Okay, anything else, Marva?
No, not...
Ed?
I agree with Marva's suggestion, and proceed with that. It'll make it much easier. We'll be able to work, and we can work with Juanita without any problem.
Well, right now, Marva and Ed, I agree with the both of you. I think that would be the best solution so far. Let's hear from Veronica.
I feel comfortable with this idea. I would like to know, though, how frequently the board is going to be, or the committee is going to be meeting, and how we can input to you suggestions. Oh, I'm sorry. You know, because I think that's one of the things that has not been clear to me as to how ideas can be funneled to whoever is the leadership, let's put it that way. So, yes.
Well, to answer your first question, the Centennial Committee, serving as the board, will meet once a month.
Okay.
That's when we meet.
Okay.
And at that time, Juanita will make her presentation. Everybody, if you have ideas, you can present it here at the, at the board, whatever you want. It's an open, public meeting. Anybody can come in to the meeting and make suggestions to us also, though, too. So if you have somebody that says, hey, I got this idea, just tell them to come over to the committee, and when we're talking about them, we'll recognize them to speak also.
I think my concern is getting a lot more community input. That's, that is why my, that's why I formed that question, because I think that's important. This is a celebration for the community, and we need to be sure we're getting suggestions and ideas as to what is meaningful to the community at large.
And I think that every board member concurs with your statement. Unfortunately, though, Juanita, when we tell the community about this, we only meet once a month, and we meet at 10:30 on, so they would have to make themselves available for this board meeting, because we're not going to have another meeting. So we want the community to be involved, but when you tell them, this is when we meet, it's an open meeting, it's a public meeting, and you would have to come and make your presentation at that time.
And I guess that was the part of my question as well. If you cannot be here, then there has to be a vehicle by which they're communicating, and that needs to be made, you know, public. If you have an idea, this is how you get ahold of Juanita. That's all I'm suggesting.
That's fair. That's fair. We're the ones who are going to market this idea. Juanita knows. It's a community member, but basically, is if you can't come to the meeting, put it in a letter format, address it to Juanita, and she'll present it to us. There's a lot of avenues here, and they can, but they can also attend the meeting, because remember, we're live on Zoom, and if they want to give us a letter or something, they can listen to the responses live on Zoom. Anything else? Juan?
No, that answers my question. I was wondering how often we would be able to meet. So it's going to be our monthly meeting, and perhaps there could be information at the branch in the main library, requesting, you know, letting people know and say if you have ideas for a centennial, and that way. Also, I think we, as agents, you know, can canvass our area, our people, for any suggestions that we can share.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Juanita, would you answer her, putting that at the Sonoyta and the Rio Rico Library?
Yes, we can definitely do that, community suggestions. We can do a community suggestion box at each library branch, and staff was already thinking about doing community suggestion input on our Facebook page as well. So of course, we're going to get that community input.
And also remember that any board member can ask for a special meeting. So if you feel, hey, we got a couple of community members, or I have some concerns, and I can't wait for 30 days, you can ask me to call for a special meeting, you can stay at the meeting. Can we have a special meeting next week so we can discuss these things more and have these people here to present it? So that's another option. Anybody here can, can ask for a special meeting, okay? The only problem that we have when we ask for a special meeting is I have to ask everybody, we're going to have it on this date, on this time, can you be here? So I have to go down to make sure there's no conflicts with anybody. But anybody who wants a special meeting, let's just say to discuss certain items on the Centennial Celebration, you as a board member have all the authority to do that. The only problem is, like I mentioned previously, is I have to make sure that the date and the time is of convenience to each board member, because we don't want to have dates and times where we're starting to eliminate board members from it. Marva?
I just wanted to say one other thing, that the fans of Friends of the Library have already started on pamphlet and bookmark, which is something that Juanita is aware of, which has already been by her. But one of the problems we had was with banners. We had spoken about banners, and that decision is still up in the air, whether we're going to do those or not. And so that's the next step, I think, and if we wait too long, we won't have them ready.
Marva, you're absolutely right, and the only thing that I would ask of you, Marva, is please, under future agenda items, request that that be a specific agenda item under the Centennial Celebration. That way we'll...
To report what Fans has done.
Right, and we'll put it under Centennial Celebration, A, your request will fall under that. So anybody who wants to say, have something on there, you just bring it under future agenda items, because we have to list...
We'll have Centennial on the...
Right.
On the agenda every time. Okay.
Veronica?
My question is this, are we going to have a completely separate agenda for the Centennial Committee? Or is it just going to be a sub-item on the main agenda?
The way you see it right now, where it's listed, Centennial Committee, let's just say, Marva says, I want to, I want to talk about what we're going to do, how much money we're going to spend on the banners, a future agenda. So I would list it, Centennial Committee, A, item A, discussion and possible action on the approval of banners. Marva twakes on there, so you would bring it up. So, but it's going to be under this agenda, because we, I assume, my interpretation is that we are all in consensus that this board is now the committee. Is that true? So it's, this is the agenda for the board, so this is the agenda for the committee. Okay, sure?
If we're going to talk about the banners, part of the problem was that Brian wanted to put banners all down morally, which meant that there would be way too many banners to store afterwards, because they would not be, they would be of no further use after the Centennial Celebration. So I thought possibly we could put them in designated areas and maybe just 10 banners. Like in designated areas, like at McDonald's downtown by the Primaria Alta. And then on Mariposa where people are more active, like around Safeway and, and the shopping centers, just hang one banner here, one banner there, one, and, and just a few banners. And then we wouldn't have the problem with storage afterwards.
Well.
And that's where the discussion got left, I think.
So then we can pick up that discussion when you put it under the future agenda items, specifically what you want to do. And I will list it as a discussion and possible action.
Okay.
So then we can make a decision on it. The only thing that would help, like what you're saying is talk to Daniza prior to, to that. So she can have a class and everything like that of it.
And it would depend on if, if Daniza and Denise want to do that because.
Well, Daniza is going to do it.
Yes.
She's the lead off of that.
Okay.
All right. Am I correct?
Correct.
All right. Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go down to you, Ed.
Yeah, my suggestion on the banners is have a supply. The question shouldn't be in storage. Once the Centennial Celebration is celebrated, any banners that we have, I think should be posted at each of the branch libraries. And that way it'll be a continuing reminder that the library has celebrated its Centennial event and just carry it through instead of wrapping them up and put them in a box and forget about them.
Okay.
At least that's my.
That's a good suggestion, Ed, but the action item will be at the next meeting.
Yeah.
If anybody else has it, so we leave, we're going to leave the discussion of this agenda item with, if you want anything specifically, you put it under future agenda items and then we'll discuss that. And so we list it as, like right now, we're having a dialogue, but it needs to be listed discussion and possible action. So we can take action on it.
So we would vote on it next time.
That's right.
To even do banners or not.
Exactly. But we have to have it as a discussion and possible action in order to take any action. Madam Clerk, isn't that correct? So that's the only way we can do it. Okay, Ed, we finish with you. Veronica, do you have anything else, Juanita?
We're talking about items for Centennial Discussion. We should probably consider how we're going to, um, publicize the donors.
Okay.
And also promote it via the newspaper. I think that with Nan's resignation, that connection with the Nogales International is no longer there.
Well, let me just jump in with that one. Nan told me this.
Okay.
And I don't want to speak for Nan and don't tell, don't say, this is what I recall, okay? Nan said, told me that she wants to resign from the board, but she is going to continue with her obligations in writing articles for the Nogales International.
Thank you.
She is going to fulfill that obligation.
Excellent.
Right.
Okay.
Marva, did I interpret that right? Did Nan tell you that too?
She told me that.
Okay. So there's two people that got the same interpretation here. So she's going to continue with that. Matter of fact, I did ask her to come to the meeting to make a presentation. I will ask her to come to all of our meetings on the Centennial so she can participate in the discussion of what she's doing. There were some concerns with her husband, that she's having a little concern with her husband. So I told her that that's okay. Also, before I forget, if you sometime between now and our next meeting and you think of an agenda item, remember you have the city email that you can just send it to Daniza. Daniza get, and I get together a week before the meeting to go over the entire agenda. But the need, Daniza is authorized to list anything on the agenda that she thinks is pertinent. So it doesn't have to be here, future agenda items, okay? You can tell it here, but you have the authority to send an email. But make sure it's on your city email when you talk to Daniza. Anything else? Anna, do you have anything for the Centennial Committee?
No. This meeting is wonderful, the dedication of the people that were there. And I was really excited. And it could be my first meeting, I wanted to say a lot of good things. I hope I wasn't the reason it's been important.
No, no, well, we, just so that you know, we have reached consensus that this board will now become the committee. And it's open to the public, like, so when we talk about this from now on, you can come and participate in the discussion like any community member. So you just come and you can be a part of it though, too, Anna. All right?
Yeah. That would be important.
And if you want something that you want to talk about to the board, get ahold of Daniza. She'll put your item as an agenda item specifically under the Centennial Committee. All right? Is it, I think we've come to a conclusion here on the Centennial Committee. Is there anybody else that has anything else you want to say? Anna, do you have anything? Any board member? Okay, let's move on. Item four, Nan Fitzpatrick resignation as Member at Large. As you know, Nan has resigned from the board. I tried to convince her to stay on, but she was pretty determined. Especially because of her husband now. So, uh, I'll entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Nan Fitzpatrick as a Member of Large to the Library Board. Motion by Ed Delsey, seconded by Marva Twates to go ahead and accept the resignation of Nan Fitzpatrick as a Member at Large to the Board of Trustees. Discussion? Objections? Motion carried. Anna? You've been to several of our meetings. If you're interested in being nominated for this position to be a Member at Large on this board, get together with Daniza, because we're going to be sending a recommendation in this week to the Mayor and Council. So since you've been here, you've shown some interest. If you're interested, get together with Daniza so she can submit your name to the Mayor and Council. Uh huh.
Pardon? We want you on.
Okay. But you have to make a commitment and talk to Daniza so she can get, she has to do all the formal paperwork to give to Madam Clerk Robinson to get it officially on the agenda. Cause you can't participate until it's approved. Okay. Anything else on that? I'm going to move on to the next item on the agenda. Okay, I'm going to move on to item five. Uh, item five, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Minutes of August the 10th, 22th meeting. We're going to postpone that until our next meeting in October. Uh, I, Mr. Kissinger just verified for me that Judith, well, tested positive for COVID. So we don't want her here. Okay, so we'll just wait until she gets well, let her catch up with the minutes and everything like that. Is that okay? All right, good. Good. Okay, now we're going to move on to item six. Uh, Board Reports, Current Events Summers Must Be Briefed and There Cannot Be Any Proposal, Discussion, Deliberation, Or Legal Action Taken. Marva?
I'm not sure if this is the place, but just to remind everybody that we need to start turning money in for the Jim Click Raffle. Some of us have. But we still need, we need to start collecting so that we can turn in the stubs. I would say in November. So that gives us.
Marva? I've turned on all of mine, correct?
I know, yes, you did.
I just want to make sure.
In fact, if you'd like a report, he sold 30 tickets. And I sold 40.
Oh.
And this guy sold 10.
Oh.
I mean, 10 is wonderful.
Yes.
And if we can get everybody to turn in their stubs and money.
Good.
That's all.
Anything else, Marva? All righty. Uh, Ed?
No problem.
Veronica?
Just want to let you know that Marvin and I did meet with Anthony Sedwick, who has general. It went off. Okay, uh, designing and building free libraries so that we can distribute them through the community. And we hope that, um, that will be a big, uh, event that we can promote for Library Week and as part of our Centennial Celebration. Uh, he's encouraging and recruiting, uh, I guess Eagle Scouts and Girl Scouts and possibly some of the Santa Cruz County, uh, participants to be involved in building these free libraries. We have asked him for six. It's not going to cost the Friends any money. He's generously offered to donate all the materials. So we're pretty excited about that and hopefully we'll meet and, and review the design shortly and we'll keep you posted.
Okay. Thank you.
I would also like to say that the Santa Fe.
Oh, let me go down the line here.
Yeah.
Veronica, you've concluded. Juanita, you're next.
Yes, I do want to mention that the fair, the Santa Cruz County Fair, the Library Friends have a booth there. We'll be there for the three days. And I want to thank Daniza and the staff for helping out, uh, to set up tomorrow. And we also have the Sanoyta, uh, staff who are going to be working. The face of the library at the fair. So we're, we're going to be giving away books and we have 200 library cards. From optimism.
Let me know if you want more. We'll take more.
Okay.
Uh, this will be a big event. Just wanted to let you know, the fans, friends are very active. Thank you.
And you conclude? I want to go for a second round now. Marva? Ed?
Yes, I was just going to say that following up on what Veronica indicated, that the Santa Fe Ranch Foundation, uh, donated a thousand dollars to Friends.
Oh, they did, the Sedwicks, huh?
Yeah.
That's nice. Okay.
So we're very pleased with their contribution and their participation.
Very good. Thank you, Ed. That's good news to hear. Veronica? Juanita? Okay, we're going to move on now to item seven on the agenda. The Library Director's Report, One Carpet Replacement Update. Daniza?
As we speak, the carpet is being replaced. It's going to be, take today and tomorrow and everything should, the carpet should be ready to go, the new carpet by Friday. And we hope to get the shelves and the books all in order by next Wednesday. That's it.
Okay. We'll now move on to item two, Staff Bathroom Update. Daniza?
The staff bathroom started, um, workers there started taking out the old plumbing on August 30th. A bone was found and it was reported to police. It was a dog bone. Who knows how long it was down in the old pipes, but that was taken care of. The new plumbing wa, is being installed as we speak and the bathroom should be ready to go by next Thursday.
The famous bathroom.
Yep.
Okay. Item three, Lego Club?
The Lego Club is once again active at the Nogales Library. It's meeting every Thursday at 3:00 PM. It's open, families, children, and we've actually started getting teens doing some Lego creations. So you're more than welcome to come every Thursday, 3:00 PM. And I want to add to that where staff is actually starting Tech Tuesdays, next Tuesday, September 30th at 3:00 PM. So staff will be helping out. Anyone who comes in who needs help, how to create an email, how to do a Google search, how to use your apps on your phone, staff is going to be dedicating an hour or more to just help out the community. And on the week of September 26th through the 30th, it's going to be Harry Potter Week at the Nogales Library. You're all, y'all are welcome to come. Dressed as wizards.
Oh, no, I don't want.
So. And that's it for now.
Okay. Any comments on the Library Director's Report? Veronica?
Just a quick question again. You're having Tech Tuesday every week?
Every Tuesday beginning next Tuesday, so September 20th.
I mean, is that ongoing or is it just for a certain length of time?
We want to make, we do want to make it ongoing. So it's the first, it's going to be September 20th, the 20th, 7th, and that's what we want. We want it to be every single, every single Tuesday at 3:00 PM.
Okay.
And if we get more participation, we will definitely do more dates.
And how about anything going on with Rio Rico?
Rio Rico, we have citizenship classes or how to become a citizen. Those are on the last Fri, I think Fridays. I have to get the schedule out, but there's different activities over at Rio Rico.
Okay. My question was really about the tech. Are you going to have Tech Tuesdays at Rio Rico?
We will work on it. We will work on it eventually. Eventually it'll get.
Super important, wonderful. Thank you very much.
Anything else?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead, Ed.
Uh, Daniza, just out of curiosity, I know we discussed it before, but does the staff control the keys to the bathroom facilities at the library?
Yes, and that's what we've been doing since the incident from, well, since these past incidents. It's just, it just gets really hard when staff has to help patron. Well, when you have to help patrons and we're doing everything else to go in, to lock and unlock the bathroom door is just, it gets a little, it's a little difficult.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, that's a concern within the problem areas that we have at the library with public coming in and trying to. And the second item, I want to say that I recruited some volunteers to help me set up the canopies for the, uh, the county fair. And thanks to Juanita's efforts, we've got everything else worked out. Three o'clock tomorrow, we find out if everything that we've done can go through.
Good.
Very good. Let's start with that.
Yeah, and two staff members from Nogales, Victor and Luis, are going to be there helping you out. And I'm, I'm probably going to be there too, so.
Oh, good.
And then also in Sanoyta.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anything else?
Yes, about the, the bathrooms, have you considered the, uh, what do you call those, a code? You know, on the door, it would make it easier for the, the staff would not have to, you know, hand out the keys and all. And they do that someplace, in some places they have codes.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of things that we're looking at. It's just, it, it is a good suggestion. Like we have brought it up in staff meetings and everything. It's just managing when like, when somebody wants to go and staff's not there. Or if we don't have that, yeah, the code would work. It's just getting.
Mm hmm. Yeah, oh, sure. And also, I can't remember, do the, um, the faucets, do they go for like 20 seconds? And I'm wondering how people manage to take a shower in 20 seconds, but, um,
Yeah.
Because there's some ways you can control that and make it much more difficult.
But I still think that if the staff controlled the keys, it minimizes the problems that you could anticipate. That's the only concern that I see. And if, if the code goes public, yeah, it's difficult for staff to be able to manage that. That's the only thing.
Okay. Anything else on the Library Director's Report? I'm going to move on to future agenda items. Juanita? Yeah. Future agenda items?
No, I, we've already discussed the ones that are going to be on the agenda for the Centennial Celebration. And we'll send more if we get other ideas.
No. We've discussed, but nobody has asked for it to be put on. This is your opportunity on future agenda items for the Centennial to say what items you want, so.
I thought we did.
Daniza to.
Okay, so we need to voice that.
You have to voice it, yeah. Unless, you don't have to voice it right now, you can send.
Okay.
You can send her an email on your city email to Daniza, I would like this on there, okay? So if you forgot it, you want to, you can do it later on.
Later on is fine.
Okay. Veronica?
Um, I'm going to just repeat the one I had mentioned earlier. If we could put this on the agenda, outreach to the community for their ideas on how we can best celebrate the Centennial with their concerns in mind. Thank you.
Ed?
Yes, I would like to just give a report on the success at the county fair.
Okay, that'll be on the agenda. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else, Ed?
No.
Marva?
I think we should have something on there to vote on banners. Yes or no? Because they need to be ordered.
You got that?
Yep.
She's got it. All righty.
Should I add mine?
Yes. Got yours.
Chairman, I will be adding the Teen Space Presentation by Luis Oviedo and the Trauma Workshop that, um, staff is attending today.
That'll also be on the agenda.
The, it's going to be a presentation on the Teen Space by Luis. And it's also going to be a, the presentation by three staff members, including Luis, on a Trauma Workshop that they've attended. They're attending today and they attended yesterday.
I heard some discussion in the meeting, why the, the bylives were on there. I heard some discussion in the meeting why the, the bylaws were on there. The reason I had Daniza put the bylaws is because I wanted everybody to review on page two, the ethics state. The reason I wanted you to review that ethics statement on there is because I received a formal complaint against one of our board members for violation of the ethics statement. And I, I'm hoping that this can be handled between the library director and the individual board member than rather doing it out here in the public. Unless, if it isn't handled, then I will have to put it onto a public meeting. Please, board members, make sure you understand the ethics statements. Please, I don't like to be placed in this position at all. So I will be addressing this with the individual board member after the meeting today. And have that board member set up a meeting with the library director to discuss this. And hopefully it can be resolved at that level right there. But if it's not, then I will have to get involved and put it down for an agenda item in the public meeting. And then I have to get the city attorney involved and everything like that. So please try to take care of this and I'll address it with a member individually. That's all that I have. Then let's move on. Our next meeting is scheduled for October the 12th at 10:30. Anna, if you're interested, there's a city council meeting before that, so get together with Daniza so you can participate, okay? Before we adjourn the meeting, I, Ed?
Yeah, before we adjourn, I just want to let the board know that Friends is having a short meeting right after our meeting here.
Okay.
And we've been able to clear the space.
Okay. I'm just going to give her a copy. Okay. Before we adjourn the meeting, I would like to personally thank Letty Robinson for taking the time to pinch hit and making sure that everything's in order so it's recorded properly so the minutes and we can get the proper connections with the Zoom meeting and everything. Madam Clerk, thank you very much for stepping in. We're, yes. She's always willing to help. She's the one who makes the mayor and council successful.
Thank you, Letty.
Okay, then I will go ahead now and entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting at 11:33 PM. Motion by Veronica, seconded by Ed to adjourn this meeting at 11:33. Motion adjourned.